Quick look at it and then we'll.
Sorry, just.
Yep, I. I just saw that pop up. Thank you, Melissa. Go ahead. Oh, okay, go ahead. Well, um, I think if Bonnie were not calling George right now, there you are. You want to let us know you're recording the meeting?
I will do that. Before we move on, we want to share that we will be recording tonight's meeting. We do plan to share this recording publicly in the event that a parent, staff, or community member would like to know what was discussed. If you do not wish to be recorded, please let us know at this time. Thank you.
And I realized I did not have board docs up just yet, but we did not start with a pledge of allegiance, so we need to do that first. So we all get ready. I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. And I think I got the calling the meeting to out of order. So I'll call the meeting to order at 6:03 after our pledge of allegiance. And now I'm going to open board docs.
Okay. Can you, Bonnie, can you play the agenda for tonight's meeting, the Northwest Leadership Agenda? Really just the talking points that we plan on covering tonight. And anything else that you need us to share, we can work that in somewhere. There we go. Perfect. Thank you very much. So the main thing is to let just this, this is just to check in. Let you know where we're doing, where we are and what we're doing in terms of the search. See what your questions are and talk a little bit about the coming events in a little greater detail. Just make sure everybody's on the same page and giving you an update as to the status of the search. So Mark's going to take the first three items and then come back to me for a couple of items and then we'll just move on down the agenda. And you can ask questions at any time if you need more detail on anything, or if we need to circle back on something that maybe we haven't covered or haven't clear about. We want to, we won't spend as much time as you need. We know this is the only item on your agenda. We also know that you have a busy week. You have another board meeting on Thursday. We want to honor your time, but we don't want to leave anything out. So that's probably all we need for that, for Bonnie. And then Mark is going to talk from the mid-search report. So if you could bring that up, then I'll turn it over to you, Mark.
Here we go. Okay, great. Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you. Well, I hopefully you've had a chance to look at this a little bit. I don't want to be redundant and just read through everything, but I, what we do with our mid-search reports is we update you on basically some numbers, some identification. But as you know, everything is confidential in our search until you decide who to move forward, forward for the semifinalists, and we'll talk more about that later. But we've had good interest in your position. We already, and we know it closes on February 26th, so basically, you know, three weeks away on Friday. We know that we already have six applicants, which at this point in the game is pretty good, pretty good. Because what we see with applicants is kind of like middle school kids. They don't turn things in until the last minute. And we will see a lot come in at the last minute. We're anticipating between 15 and 20. We've had good response, so we're hoping we get that many and hopefully it'll, we think it'll be a good pool. So out of the completed applications, two of them are current Washington superintendents in other school districts. Three applicants are from executive directors assistants from other school districts in our state. And then one is a former superintendent from Colorado. So those are the completed applications we have. We'll talk more about how you'll be able to see those completed applications after the position closes on February 26th. So we sent out 65, actually it's 66 now. I just sent one out yesterday. So we've sent out 66 applications. Out of those 66, there are eight current Washington State superintendents, and you can see two have already applied. Current out-of-state superintendents, there's nine from a lot of different states. And I know you're going to ask me what NG stands for, and what it stands for is Nigeria. We have a candidate that has an application that's a superintendent schools in Nigeria, an international school in Lagos, Nigeria. So all those states are represented, the nine. And I, who knows if they'll all apply, but that's, that's a real diverse group of people from out of state, for sure. From far away is Nigeria to Oregon, Idaho, Montana, Minnesota, Illinois, New York, or excuse me, Nevada. So former superintendents that are, have applications, there's five. There's two from Washington. One's, one from Illinois, one from Oregon, and one from Colorado. The Colorado one is already applied. The current Washington assistant superintendents, which is usually where we get most of our applicants from in all of our jobs really that we fill, there's 37. That's a large number. We expect a large number of assistant superintendents, directors, executive assistants to apply for your position. It's a good position, a good-sized district with a good reputation that we think you'll have a lot of good applicants that are assistant superintendents as well as superintendents. We have three Washington State principals that we've sent applications to. Non-traditional, meaning people right out of the workforce or maybe out of the military. We don't have any at this time that we've sent applications to. It could spring up, but we don't have any at this time. So breaking them down by gender, we have 15 female applications out and 50 male applications out. So quite a discrepancy, probably in leaning more towards the male applicants obviously than the female. It's a, quite a gap there that we have, not that we haven't contacted a lot of female applicants. There's just that many that have requested applications. Seventeen of these 66 that we've sent out have their doctorate. And nine are minority. By minority, we mean mainly people of color. So you have nine that are of minority, from Hispanic to Asian to African-American across the board. And then the online survey, and we started this up right early on in the search. Right now, as of the 29th of January, we have 184 responses. So that's not a lot. That's good, but it's not great. But it is, will give the board, we think the board, a good representation of what people have to say, what their priorities are, and what they want in a new superintendent. So as we go through, kind of keep these numbers in mind. This is, this is a good, at this point of the search, this is a really good number of potential applicants and a really diverse group of applicants that we'll see. We'll just have to see how it comes about. So any questions on that at all from the board?
I have a question. Mark, would it make sense to communicate the opportunity to participate in the online survey to get more responses? Or do you feel like we've got a fair representation of the community in that?
Well, I think, Carrie, here's what we are going to recommend, because it's going to take you a while to go through these responses and it's, you're going to have, we think, a lot of applications to look at too. So what we would suggest, Carrie, is that you really hit it hard over the next week. Get the word out, Facebook, through your schools, remind people of the online survey. And then a week before the job closes, on the 19th of February, we close it down. And then that weekend, we can get the report to the board, we can get it to you. And that'll give you a whole week to read that before the position closes. And then right after the position closes, soon after that, we'll get you the applications to look at too. So that's, that would be our advice, is hit it hard one more time. Get it out, especially like Lynn says, you've got kids coming back to school. This is a good time to get parent input, to get input, staff input, and also hopefully community input. And, you know, get that, get the number over 200. That would be a good number to have you look at and be able to kind of process, to give you input before you go into the selection process for the candidates. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
Okay.
So I want to let the community and staff know when it's going to close. We may have told them that it was going to close on the 26th, the survey, the job closes on the 26th. So we may have told them the survey would be open for the duration of the search. So we might want to give them a heads up that it's closing early, so somebody doesn't come back around later and see that discrepancy.
Yeah, that's important. You let them know that it's a week earlier than we originally said. Yeah.
I have a question, a couple of them actually. The first one, when you say that applications were sent, are those actually requested by these people who have seen the posting and requested you to send them an application?
Not all of them, Melissa, not all of them. Probably about half of them.
Okay. And my second question is this timeframe, obviously, Ordin is not the only school district in Washington looking for a superintendent this year. Does the timeline, does it run parallel for all districts? Are we ahead of the game as far as our closing and selection process, or are we going to be behind other districts?
I think for the size of district you have, I think you're right in the sweet spot. We said that to begin with. There'll be other districts that are closing or have closed before you, but districts similar to Ordin, no, you're in the sweet spot. You're in a good spot. There's quite a few that'll close after you. I mean, that's not to say, I mean, there's a district down in, down by Olympia, Tenino is doing a search. They closed theirs over a week ago and they're into their finalists already. But that, there's, there are very few out there that are district sheer size that are closing ahead of you. And I think when you look at, when we look at your potential applicants, you're still going to have a very good pool. You're still going to have a very good pool.
And I do know that you mentioned that early on, but I'm the type of person that until I, having never gone through this process before, a lot of things go over my head until I'm deep into it and then it starts making sense. So.
Yeah, yeah.
So I appreciate the answering of that again. Thank you.
You know, and the rubber's meeting the road. I mean, we've been talking about this quite a while. Remember, we started before you hired an interim and so, but it, now the reality's setting. And when you start seeing numbers and you start seeing, these are actual people that potentially could be applying from as far away as Nigeria, you know. It's, you're going to be reading some really interesting applications. And we really think you're going to have a good pool. And it's, it's not going to just be superintendents from other districts. It's going to be assistant supes. It's going to be directors, and there's going to be some real strong candidates.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
The one thing that we worry the most about is when two similar districts in the same region have a similar closing date. Then you get people applying for both districts and you get the same finalists and it really gets kind of, it can get messy. Right now, we don't see that as anything that's happening. The districts that Mark mentioned, not really in Pierce County, so, and not the same size. So I think you're going to be fine.
Thank you, Wayne. That was kind of obviously the thought in my head is are we going to have to battle with somebody for the missed candidate?
Well.
We do have candidates that are applying in multiple districts. And we kind of watch that and we, we tell them that our expectation is they keep us in touch, they keep us posted. So if they've got an interview somewhere, we know, we kind of know that, so we're not counting on them if that's, if we're going to lose them. And just try to make sure every, no surprises.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the candidate profile here, on the applicants and inquiries?
Okay, I'll pick up the next.
So do we have a consensus, Carrie, to really hit the advertising hard for the survey and then let people know it's going to close a week early and then get that to you? A week early, board? Are we okay on that? Do we have a consensus on that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea with everything going on right now. Yeah.
Okay, good.
George, you're good.
Okay, got thumbs up from George. Good.
Bonnie and I. Yeah, I was just going to ask, Bonnie and Lynn, can you take the lead on re- that and, okay, perfect.
We will work on it.
Great. Thank you, guys. Okay, Wayne.
Okay, so, so we're going to close the survey out on February 19th and the position closes on the 26th. So we will want to set up a process where you have access to the application. And we've talked a little bit about Bonnet, with Bonnie, that the board docs or some other similar system that you're used to will lend itself to that. So Mark and I, or Dennis Ray, will get the applications to Bonnie and then Bonnie can make them available to board members. We've done, most recently, and you can let us know if this is a good idea or not a good idea, but kind of give the board a heads up as to what we think the groupings are, so that you use your time to the best advantage. And what we'll do is probably group the A, B, C group or something like that. And then have you look the most seriously at the As and Bs. Some people like to read every word. Other people just want to skim through them and then let us present the candidates. We're fine with you doing it either way. We just want to make the best use of your time. But we want to have, we want you to have access to all the files. We want you to have time between the closing date of the 26th and the screening meeting of March 9th. So at the screening meeting, you'll have had access to all the files. We'll have vetted all the candidates. And we'll come, we'll come probably like this. And we'll basically present the candidates in any manner that you want us to. Sometimes we start at the bottom of the list and eliminate people. And sometimes we just, just talk about the ones that we, we think need the most consideration, the ones that you want to talk about. The idea is identify probably six, maybe six and an alternate candidates that we move forward. And so that'll be, that'll be our objective. We do that by consensus. You're not taking a roll call vote. It's an executive session. So there won't be public. Information is highly confidential through that process. And so we'll, we'll kind of come out of that meeting with direction from you as to who we want to invite to the semifinalist interviews, which are scheduled for March 20th. Is that making sense?
So one additional thing, and as you know, the governor made a proclamation last week. And of course, Pierce County is in phase two now, right? So under his proclamation, it is possible that we can meet in person for that meeting. That's what we put on the agenda, in person. I can be there in person. Wayne may not be ready to be there yet. He could be there remotely, but we could meet in person for that rather than remotely. When you're going through candidate files and all that and talking about applications and that, sometimes, well, always has been easier to do that in person. So it'll be up to you as a board, but we certainly can accommodate that in person or we can do it remotely like we're doing right now. I don't know what your thoughts are on that. I, we're working with another district way up north now. And they wanted to do that in person because they felt seeing people face-to-face and having these conversations are easier to process than doing it this way.
I'm open to the group. You had said, just backing up a little bit, you had commented about possibly grouping the candidates into A, B, and C, kind of your top picks, mid picks. I would appreciate your opinions on that. You're experienced at this more so, I think, than any of us. Rest of the board, what are your thoughts on that?
I personally defer to expertise whenever I can. Taking into consideration, you've seen what our kind of criteria, our wish list is, our app form that was sent out. So yeah, I'm definitely on board with having the experienced. Kind of categorizing that.
Yeah. And we would still.
I'm going to read them all.
Right. We would still have access to all of them, of course, because there could be somebody that jumps out to us lower in the groups.
Sure. You might have, you might have a question as to why we put somebody in a C category.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that's clear to you. Typically, it's either they're not prepared for the position or there's something in their recommendations that causes them to put it in there. We want to, we want to explain that to you. It's not arbitrary and there's no, there's no backstory to it.
Okay, cool. And then we should decide now if we're going to do it in person or not, unless you guys want to think it over and talk later when Stanley's with us. I guess we don't have to decide right now on that.
I'll prefer to everybody else what they want to do. I like in person, but I'm perfectly willing to do it this way.
Lynn, you have the whiteboard up there and you've got names on the whiteboard and you're erasing them. In person is far better, but.
Yeah, I would prefer in person if everybody is comfortable with that. And I also feel that if there is anybody uncomfortable with that, we could kind of do a dual situation where one person attends virtually and have, you know, I don't, I don't think that would have to be an all or nothing sort of thing. But I would like to be in person if we could, because I feel like we'll have a much better, as George said, I'd prefer it to be.
So this is, this is for the March 9th one we're talking about?
No, not, yeah, the March 9th one.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah. And I think we could, Bonnie, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we did it in the board conference room, whoever, if somebody didn't want to attend in person, we could put you up on the giant screen, so you'd be larger than life. But you could attend that way. I'm comfortable meeting in person. You know, our teachers are back in the building, so I think it'd be good if we could start meeting in person.
I think Wayne and I, if we're there, will be masking up and then we'll ask.
For sure, yeah.
We'll ask that we have the separation.
Yes.
Okay, great.
We will make sure that we follow all the protocols. We're getting pretty good at it. We've had months of practice now with our high-needs students and we're getting into practice with the rest of our student body. So we will ensure that we keep our board and you safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that will be the executive session that will be in person. The open public meeting, I believe, still has to be virtual. I don't think we've been released for that yet.
Okay.
That's all right.
That's our understanding too, Bonnie. I think you can't, you can't limit the number of people that can attend an open public meeting. So you virtually forces you to go remote. So we'll talk about that when we talk about the preliminary interviews a little bit, so.
Okay. Bonnie, will you let us know if there's any problem with us meeting? If we can't meet in person and satisfy the virtual meeting requirements? We kind of let us.
Right. I think we'll be good for the executive session portion of that, because as Mark said, we can control the amount of people for that. And I can set you up in the boardroom with enough spacing, I believe. But as far as the open public meetings, that part will have to open up in.
Yeah.
Virtually.
Okay.
Work, yeah.
But we'll, I don't have my calendar pulled up, so we would all have to pretty much stay in the room for the public meeting portion with our laptops and be on camera.
Well, you would, just, you would either be in the district or at home. You could be at home for that, for the public meeting, like you're, like we are now.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
We would be moving immediately into an executive session, correct?
Right. So we're going to be, we'll already be at the district office.
Oh, you mean for the ninth? I'm sorry. My, my bad. Yeah, you'd open it up as a regular meeting and then go to executive session. Right.
Okay. Great. I think that would work. So we'll plan for in-meeting or in-person unless otherwise.
Sounds good. So then, moving on from that meeting, at that, at that meeting, we'll ask you to identify six semifinalists, possibly seven with an alternate, depending on what, where there's a break in the pool or just how your consensus process works. And then on March 20th, Saturday, we'll invite those people to interview. And we're thinking that will probably need to be remotely. I think that's still the case, right, Mark?
Yes, it is. It, we can't constrain or limit the number of people in a open public meeting, yeah.
So, so what we'll do, we'll get, we'll schedule the candidates. They'll come in on, by, by your process. You'll conduct the interviews. We'll provide you with some questions. We're going to talk about that a little bit down lower in the agenda, because we need to work through a little doubt a little bit. We'll provide you with some questions. And I think that the tricky part that we're still, is still developmental, is figuring out how you get input from the observer. So Bonnie, we're going to kind of need to work through that. And I know you've got some ideas on it, so that the observers to the process can watch you conduct the interview, they can hear the answers to the questions. And then through a Survey Monkey or a Google survey process, they can get you their ideas as to their perceptions about the various candidates in a manner that's timely enough so that at the end of your interviews, you can review that input and factor that into your deliberation. That's the whole point of having them observe the process. So that is still kind of developmental in nature, from our perspective anyway. We're going to do a dry run with another district before we get to your stage of that process. So that, and we think they got it figured out, but we'll have more information. And I think Bonnie and your tech people can help us with that too. So, is that making sense? And so after those interviews, then in your deliberation, you'll have your observations from the interviews. You'll have input from the observers to the process. And then we'll ask you to reach consensus on moving three people forward. And so there again, the consensus process, you're not quoting, you're not taking action, you're just directing us to continue the process with three candidates. And so then, let's see, I think, Mark, you're going to pick up the part about the finalists. Any questions on the preliminary interview process, though?
No, but on that, on that 320 meeting, Bonnie, can we allow people video access so they can see the candidates versus just calling in?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, you want to, you want to do that, yeah.
When we do these preliminary interviews in person, we have the candidate bring abbreviated resume, a one-page resume. Sometimes they bring a little brochure. So we probably want to have a process where that information is available to the observers, because you'll have seen the files and so you'll know a lot about these people. But the observers will go, now, who's this person? Where are they from? You know, and they'll want to see something. So a short bio sketch or something on your website, where we put the schedule. Candidate A is from somebody, someplace, and here's a little bit about them. So they've got a little kind of advanced organizer to make the interview more meaningful to them. So they're not just trying to catch up as you're conducting the interview. But we can figure that out. I don't think that's going to be too difficult.
That's great. I had it in between the preliminary interviews on the 20th and then the selection of the finalists. Is there, is that all done on the 20th? After we've listened to the six or seven, we choose the three finalists at the end of that? And is that all, so we don't get to have necessarily the feedback that comes in from the public?
You'll get that. You'll get that prior to your deliberation on the, get the dates right, on the, after the preliminary interviews, on the 20th. So you'll conduct the interviews, you'll get the feedback from the observers, and you'll consider that information as you deliberate to figure out who you're moving forward. Does that make sense? Am I missing?
It does, but there's no, so we just need to, as a, as a board and a district, we need to set the date that we would have the selection of the three finalists after the 3/20, and getting, getting some of our candidates. No.
No, it's all the same day, Melissa.
Same day. Maybe what we missed out on is you only, after your, your six interviews, you'll need an executive session for your deliberations. And then, after that deliberation, out of that executive session where you deliberate, then you'll direct us to invite three people forward.
Okay, so what I'm, what I seem to be missing, and maybe I'm not being very clear, I guess, in my, how I'm presenting my question, is that we have the preliminary interviews on 3/20. We have an open forum, so that people can present their thoughts and ideas to the community, or no? Is this just board doing this?
No, it's an open meeting.
So, I'm having trouble understanding where are we gonna have the time to get whatever our community thoughts are, if they had any?
They'll, they'll come in, they'll come in electronically by
During the meetings.
At the end of the meeting, yes, or throughout, yeah.
Sorry. It's gonna be long, Melissa.
New territory, and it is a little bit funky trying to figure out how it's gonna work here.
I'm sorry, it's very new to me, and I'm just trying to, trying to visualize it ahead of time. And I know it'll make sense when we get there, but I'm just like, well, okay, so, I gotcha.
But I don't, so hang on. So, we, all these, sorry, but we do all these, you know, we have all this conversation between the community and the candidates that occurs. And then, we listen in on that and hear the questions from the community, and then we go right into deliberation. So there's no opportunity for us to say, okay, candidates, you go off into this room, we want to hear what the community thinks.
No.
No, we, we
Chance for them to speak candidly with us about, you know, I really resonated with this candidate, or I have concerns about that candidate.
That's where you do, that's what you do in your deliberation, and, and you reach consensus as to who you're moving forward, who the three that you're moving forward.
Okay.
It, it actually goes, it actually goes pretty smoothly. It's not, you, you'll, you'll ask each candidate the same questions. Each person will ask the same questions. You'll be taking notes. Get to the end, and you go into executive session. You read the comments from the community, different people in the community that have been observing, some for the whole day, some for part of the day. And then, then you go into, we go into a consensus-building activity to get you to consensus on the three to move forward for the next week, and each spend a day in the district. So, it goes pretty, it really does. It goes pretty smoothly.
We trust you. It was just, we've got a really strong commitment to communicating back and forth with our community members. Like, here was that they would contribute all of these questions and comments, but then it would appear that we didn't consider them in our deliberations, because there was no, you know.
So, so, when we are in, the observers, we'll let them know that you'll be deliberating, and that you'll be considering their information, their input, as you deliberate on your three people that you're moving forward.
Okay.
It really works out okay. Obviously, it's easier when it's in person, but it should work out, that should work out okay.
Okay, I have a question about the observers. Is this a selected group, or is this anybody? I can't remember that.
It's anybody. You can't make it selected. You can't.
Okay.
You've got, it's an open public meeting, so you gotta open it up to everybody.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure I understood that. So we need to therefore communicate that one real well also.
Yes.
Right.
And if, if you have some key people you want to be there, you as board members can reach out to them and ask them to be there, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's, okay, that helps me.
Okay.
We have all six of them on March 20th?
Yes.
Okay, do we stop in between? So does the board deliberate in between? Like, say we have candidate one? No, we go through all six?
So they go, what, what the setup is, is we usually start at eight in the morning. We go about, we go 50 minutes, we set aside 50 minutes for each candidate with a 10-minute break between each candidate. Wayne and I will introduce them to the group, and then, as soon as they get introduced, the candidate will say hi to everybody in this format. Usually, they'll shake your hands. And then we, we go into the questions, and you do that. We probably do four in the morning, and then take a half an hour break for lunch, and then start up again at 12:30. So, eight to nine, nine to 10, 10 to 11, 11 to 12, half an hour for lunch, and then we go from 12:30, 1:30, 1:30 to 2:30. And after that, the board goes into executive session, reviews the comments, deliberates, and decides which three to move forward. Does that make sense? Okay, I think it'll go, I think it'll go well, because I, I think Bonnie has a good grasp of, of this whole Google documents and all this. And that's what other districts are using, and the feedback are from, there's a way you can do that, don't ask me how, but there's a way you can do that. So.
You know, and, you know, one of the things that we said earlier, it's all confidential until you, until we announce the six semifinalists, the six people that are gonna be invited in for interviews. And then those people's names are made public, the schedules made public, the processes will have been made public before then, I would think. And so, that's an opportunity for you and staff and possibly community members to reach out to other communities and kind of back up the work that Mark and I are doing in terms of vetting the candidates. So there's a lot of activity from the point that the names became public through the two rounds of interviews. And, and as you get to, to the selection of the finalists, then that's, that really gets, where people get involved. As you, you can imagine, financial people in the district calling, a finance person in another district, board members calling board members, high school principals reaching out to high school principals. So there's a lot of activity that all kind of comes together as we, as you zero in on who your choice is. So, a lot of activity. Mark, you're gonna take it and talk about the finalists?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add to that. When I was OEA president, another district reached out to me. Having been the union president, what was my input on so-and-so? So, yeah, it's, it's, people will reach out all over the place about that.
And, and particularly the unions will reach out. That's, they're very connected. The, the other thing, I think, you, you will have access to all the applications. But the six we move forward will be the only ones that are made public. So, you may read an application from somebody from another district. That, once we move forward, those people are still confidential. Those people that have applied, that don't move forward, are still confidential. And Wayne and I will contact them and let them know they didn't make the cut. So, it's not public knowledge for everybody that applied, it's just the six that you move forward, okay? Okay, so once you've decided on the three, who are you gonna move forward, we will set up for each of those three candidates on the 23rd, 24th, and 25th to spend a day in your district. But things remaining as they are right now, even though they will be in their district, they will meet with different groups of people remotely. And so it'll be set up similar to how we did our focus groups, if you remember that. We'd have a group of teachers, we'd have a group of community foundation, I can't remember the foundation group, different groups of people. The body would work together with you, carry the board members, to put together who you want them to meet with. But from eight in the morning to the end of the day, they will meet with different groups. The last group they meet with, and we need to give them a break for lunch and a break for dinner, but the last group they meet with is you. So at 6 o'clock, there's a community meeting, and the community is invited to come in. And basically, at that time, the candidate will introduce themselves, tell you why they want to be your superintendent, talk about, a little bit about their, maybe their family, their history. And then it's open for questions. It can be asked, pretty much within reason, anything that people may want. So, you can observe on that. We, in fact, we recommend the board to watch how the candidate works with the community. Watch how they interact with people, watch how they connect with people. And I know it's this format, but it's the best we can do. If we could do it in a public meeting with everybody there, that would be better, because you'd see how they would do it in person. But the way things are, we can't. So anyhow, you'll do that, and then at the end of the day, at seven, right around seven, you'll go into an executive session as a board and meet with the candidate. And basically, you're able to ask them whatever's on your mind. And you say, well, you said this in the preliminary interview, I was a little concerned, or I thought about this. How do you feel about this? And that takes about an hour, 50 minutes to an hour, and then you're done for that day. You can, you can debrief a little bit afterwards, but the first two days, that's how it goes. And then on the third day, after the executive session with the candidate, then you go into deliberation. And you also have input to read, too, at the end of each day. The people that are meeting with the candidate, they will give you feedback about what they think about the candidate. So you'll have that to review as well at the end of each day, and also you'll have quite a bit to review at, at the end of the whole three days. So candidate A is here on Tuesday, B on Wednesday, C on Thursday. So how do we decide in the preliminaries and the finals, who goes first and who goes last? What we've done in the past, and it's worked well, is we go by geography. So say the, the person is from Nigeria, you move them forward, they would get the choice, the first choice of time, because they're furthest away. Or somebody from Colorado, or whatever. So we go that, in that direction. If there's somebody from a neighboring district or your own district, they will get the last choice of, of the time slot during the day, whether, which day it is, or which time it is. So, each candidate spends a day in the district. Basically, you're meeting with the candidate in executive session at the very end of the day. You can basically ask them whatever's on your mind. And they can, and they'll interact with you, too, and, and hopefully it goes smoothly. They're gonna be interviewing you, just like you are them, so it, it'll go well. Then the idea is that you will come to, we'll deliberate on that last day, Thursday. You'll come to a consensus on who you want to choose the next morning. You would go, we would advertise a meeting the next morning. You would go into executive session at the start to make sure everybody's on the same page, so. You come out of that meeting in an open public session, and you would announce your choice. You would do a roll call vote, and then after that, we would sign a letter of intent between the board president and the candidate. And then at the next board meeting, I think the next board meeting, I don't have it here, I don't think, would be March 30th. At March 30th, you would officially approve the contract, and then you officially would have your superintendent, who would start on July 1st. Questions?
I'm sorry, I'm back again with another question. You have mentioned in that finalist process, whether each year for one day, the 23rd, 24th, and 25th, you mentioned that the board would observe. Is that the entire day with all of their formats, or just that 6:00 PM timeframe, the final one with the board and community?
Good question, because we can't, I mean, we obviously can't stop you from observing throughout the day if you want. But really, the only time that we ask you to be there is at 6 o'clock. One of the things we found, just like the focus groups, if a board member is there, people aren't as open and as free to talk. And it's, we recommend that you not be there, that basically the whole day until 6 o'clock, the candidates are meeting with different, they're meeting with different groups of people. You're getting feedback from those groups, and then at 6 o'clock, you're observing how they're working with the community, and then go into executive session for a final interview after that.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering, I needed to take some vacation days from
No, no.
Save your vacation days when you travel.
Thank you.
No. Any other questions before, we've got a couple other things to cover with you. You guys, good questions, though. You guys have asked some really good questions.
So, moving on. So you see, you see that you get two rounds of interviews. And the first round of interview is a structured interview. Each candidate gets the same question. The second interview in executive session with your three finalists, each of your three finalists, is just a conversation, and you can come with some talking points, or you might have different questions for three candidates, three different candidates. You could have one that's an experienced superintendent, one that hasn't been an experienced superintendent, and one that's from out of state. So you might want to have different, a different conversation with each of the three of them, and we kind of set it up that way. The other difference is, at the finalist interview, all your stakeholder groups, like your central office administrators or your teachers, they get to ask questions of the candidates, and it's an interactive kind of process, and that's, that's by design. So one of our tasks in preparation for the preliminary interview, the Saturday interview on March 20th, is to reach agreement on the questions. Where we've done that in the past is I'll send Bonnie a sample list of questions that are sort of in alignment, or closely in alignment with your criteria that you posted in the, in the brochure. Basically, you said, this is what we're looking for. Well, then we ought to have some questions that kind of match up with that. And that's what, that's what we try to do. And we'll get them to you probably in the next week or so. And you can pass them back and forth among each other, between each other. You can make suggestions, you can wordsmith them. But eventually, you know, a week or so before the interview, we want to lock in on what the questions are gonna be, so that we've got that all ready to go, and we're not messing around with it at the last minute. The questions are pretty standard. You know, there's typically a finance question, a, you know, a community engagement question, a levy and bond question, that kind of stuff. So there's really no, no surprises, but wording is important, and we want you to be
Do you pose, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you pose those questions, or do we pose them?
I, we'll start, we'll get the process started. We've got a bank of questions, and then you can react to what we send you. The other thing that we do
Oh, no, I mean at the interview. Do you ask those questions, or do we say them?
You ask the question.
That's right.
Same board member, if you're asking questions, typically Stanley will probably start with question number one. Welcome the person to the district, thank them, tell them they have 50 minutes, you know, that kind of thing. Get them kind of settled in, ask the first question. And then somebody will ask question number two. You kind of do the same rotation for all six candidates, just so it's organized and consistent, and kind of easier on all of you.
So I assume then that someone is the timekeeper?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That probably will be Bonnie.
No surprise there. We typically give them a heads up. I don't know how you're gonna do it, you know, in this process, but we give them a heads up halfway through, and then maybe another one when there's 15 minutes left, another one when there's five minutes left. They're pretty good at keeping track of this, so it, it works out pretty well. So the next thing that you can expect in terms of questions is a draft questions coming to Bonnie, and then Bonnie kicking it out to all of you, and then either interacting back with Bonnie to finalize them, or Bonnie to me, or however you want to do it. We'll get it, we'll get it done. Usually works out okay. Right? Mark, do you want to take the last few items?
Yeah. Well, the, the, the final interview process, the one thing that we need to decide is kind of like when we do the, the presentation of the candidates. We've talked, I think, from the get-up with you guys about how important it is for you to meet with the, at least the three finalists in person. So, we think now, based on what we have from the governor's proclamation, we believe you can meet individually as a board. I mean, following the same protocol we would do with the, when we present the candidates, but there would be the five board members, the candidate, and then Wayne and I. So there would be eight people in the room spaced out, but the final interview with each candidate would be done in person. So we kind of need a consensus that that's the way you want to go, or do you want to go like this? Our suggest, strong suggestion is meet with them in person. You don't want to hire somebody to be Uh, our suggest, strong suggestion is meet with them in person. You don't want to hire somebody to be your soup if you haven't met with them in person. Now, if the person from Nigeria is, is, uh, can't get a plane here and get in time, that might be a bit of a challenge. But we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Uh, so what do, what are you thinking? Uh, in person, I see some, I think, see some nodding. What do you think, George?
I would always go with in person.
Yeah, me too. I, I agree with you. I agree with you. So let's plan on in person, similar format. That candidate will have been here all day, eight in the morning, they'll be meeting with different groups all day. I think you want them to meet with Bonnie too. Then all the way through the day, if the group is less than 10, I'd say maybe they could do it in person, but we'll work on that as we go through. That's not, nothing to worry about right now. But throughout the day, they meet with different groups and then six o'clock with the community and then in person with you at seven o'clock for the last interview, which is about an hour normally.
And, and I know we'll work out ahead of time, you know, like with microphones and things like that because with the social distancing in that room which has bad audio, we'll want to make sure that that's taken care of. So.
Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure Bonnie will be all over that. Yeah.
We will take care of you. Yes, absolutely.
Since I'm hard of hearing, I wanted to bring it up.
Well, you're not the only one. Ask Wayne.
What?
What?
So the, uh, the other part of logistics, just as we talked about before, what, when the, it, it doesn't apply in, in this situation, but usually when we do preliminary interviews, the candidates coming in from say Idaho, uh, they pay their own way to come in. In this situation, they would, they'd be doing it virtually. But since we want them in the district and if they're out of state or coming from ways away, uh, the district will help cover those expenses for them to come into the, and spend a day in your district. Uh, we haven't happened, had it happen very often, but once in a while a candidate from out of state would fly in and, and the district will help with the cost of the, of the flight. So, um, that's just to give you a heads up that that could occur. Not that it will occur, but it could occur. So just to be aware of that. So, uh, Wayne, you want to talk about the contract?
Yeah, we, uh, we understand you had a session the other, a few days ago and you've worked on, uh, compensation and you have given us a range. Lynn sent me a text with what your, what your range is and that sounds pretty good to us. Um, so that's fine. What we'd like to have is the actual wording of the contract. Um, and we know that it might vary depending on who you, where they, where, depending on who you hire, their placement on that range might vary. But the other details of the contract should be pretty standard. What we like to do is as the semifinalists are done interviewing, we like to be able to tell them, okay, if you're invited back for a final, final interview, this is the contract. So that there's not any detailed protracted negotiations and there's no surprises and there's not another request for another $3,000 or some other perk that wasn't anticipated by the board. Um, so any work that you could do to move the contract along, probably a good time to have your attorney review it would be, uh, time well spent. So if you can think about that and, and the process, Lynn could probably be very helpful with that. Uh, Tony might want to get involved in that, although I know he's kind of trying to stay out of things, but, um, he certainly knows about superintendent contracts. But I think having it all ready to go to the extent possible, um, would serve the process well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thanks for letting us know that upfront. Thank you.
And we did have a recent conversation about that. So I, um, I'm sure Lynn is going to, um, take care, take care of that particular process with, uh, district attorney.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good, 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 good. Other, anything else? Let's keep in your wake at night, besides getting kids back to school.
Yeah, that's great. You're getting, doing that.
Questions?
Everything keeps me awake, but, um, nothing particularly about this anymore. You've answered a lot of my questions and really helped me to kind of visualize how this is going to go. So I appreciate that.
I really appreciate how thorough you are. I, I've been involved in, you know, like principal, uh, applications and, and as a community member. So I really appreciate how you walked us through this and you really covered a lot of ground. So thank you for your work.
But the mid search report's kind of funny because it's just been sitting there from your perspective. We've been pretty busy, but, but you don't see that. And so that's, this is a chance for us to let, you know, what's taking place and then what's coming down the pike, coming in your direction. So we want everybody to be prepared and we'll take it one step at a time and Bonnie's been great. There just hasn't been a time when we've needed something that she hasn't been right there and, and, uh, that helps a lot immeasurably. She'll be glad to see us go when this is over with.
And the next one to hear from you will be after the position closes and you have, um, applic- applications and so forth for us to work.
Right. We'll, we'll let you know. We'll let you know how many you have. And then, uh, probably that following Monday, that's on a Friday when it closes. The next Monday we'll have those to Bonnie to put into your board docs, uh, confidential file so you can start looking at them. And then give us about a week. We vet pretty deeply, so it'll take us about a week to get that ABC to you, but we want to get that to you before we meet with you.
I appreciate your thorough vetting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right.
Okay, everybody. Well, have a good evening. Thank you. Thanks Bonnie for setting this up. We'll be in touch, Bonnie.
My pleasure.
So.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for your help, Lynn.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Thank you Bonnie and Lynn.
Yes, and Mark and Steve, thank you. And so going back to board comments. Next item on our agenda, is there anything that we need to discuss?
Did we, did we lose board members?
No, oh, we got three of them. We still have four of them. We're okay.
Yeah, we're okay.
Anything you'd like to discuss?
I just want to say, I'm so glad we went with them. I mean, I've known of them before. And, uh, I'm really, really impressed with, with the job they're doing and I'm so glad we went with them.
I feel like they've really held my hand really well tonight. I had so many questions as I was looking at this, like, well, how is that going to work? So I, I do appreciate them and I do have, I just didn't present it to them, but, um, the logistics issue. If we're supposed to be meeting them in person at the finalist um, and we're supposed to meet them at seven o'clock, but we're all supposed to be there at the 6:00 PM when they have that, um, community where the community gets involved and they want the board to observe that particular part, we're kind of going to have to be at the district office at 6:00 PM, correct? So then we would participate then virtually for that part and then in person for, okay, see, so.
Thanks for clarifying that, Melissa, because I didn't realize that. Okay.
And I'm going to apologize in advance for the meeting that I think is virtual, but that's actually at the district office when I come hot tailing it down the hill. I need Bonnie to put like in person, like big bold letters in the calendar.
I took some notes during the meeting and so I'll, I'll prepare something so maybe it'll help keep us all on the same page. Because there is a lot going on, a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
I'm not kidding Bonnie, you are a rock star. Thank you so much for keeping us on to this and organized.
And if you come zooming down the hill, Carrie, just park in front of my house because you'll be safe there. Ron won't have you towed.
Oh, awesome.
Oh, golly.
Marcy knows that I'm not kidding.
I'll be excited to see you guys in person.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sure. That'll be
All right. I think we have a solid plan. I'm so grateful for those guys too and this is a big decision. So.
Yes, it is.
Got to pick a good one.
I'm terrified.
And we will be very tired when we're done with this.
Holy.
Gotta schedule in those, excuse me, older body, we need the potty breaks.
Oh, yes, thank you, Melissa.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. Make sure, make sure. Or get out of my way.
All right, you guys. Are we all set? Any other board comments?
No.
All right, then I will adjourn the meeting tonight at 7:02. Thank you, ladies.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks for running the meeting.
No problem. I'll get it right eventually. Lord.